Good evening, folks, and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. The meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Here.
Burkhardt?
Here.
Clements?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Malodra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
McGowan?
Here.
Radecki?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We have a full house tonight, folks, and we have a good meeting ahead. To begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to ask my friend, the senior at Geneva High School, Grace, to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Grace. Folks, our first item of business tonight is Item 3A, and 3A is to proclaim October 22nd through the 28th, 2018 as Red Ribbon Week in the city of Geneva. We have a special guest with us this evening who you met just a moment ago, Grace. Grace, would you like to join us at the podium, please? I know you have some comments prepared, and you have your mentor and teacher with you as well.
Hi, I'm Lisa Meister. I'm a teacher at Geneva High School. I teach health, and I've also been the SAD Club sponsor since 2002. And so I've been working really hard with this organization to help promote the healthy lifestyles of students and to help advocate for healthy lifestyle choices. And for the last two years, Grace Hahn has been our club president, and she has done a fantastic job of promoting the same ideas and ideals and helping to promote asset building in teens among the district. So I'm going to turn it over to Grace for some words on Red Ribbon Week.
Thank you, Ms. Meister.
Hey, good evening. My name is Grace Hahn, as you said, and I would like to thank you all for allowing me the precious time at your meeting to recognize the importance of Red Ribbon Week. The entire nation celebrates this week each year to send a message to their community about taking responsibility for health and making mature decisions regarding substance abuse. The Red Ribbon Committee aims to help children and teens build strong assets to stay on the right track and away from substances. We know that there's a lot of pressure on teens to try to fit in with different crowds, and a lot of that pressure is placed on them by their own perceptions of what normal behavior looks like. The Red Ribbon Committee and the SAD Club try to spread a different message to teens to let them know what the real norm is, that most teens are not out there using drugs on the weekends. Most teens spend their time with their families and friends in a safe way and act as positive role models for the younger children in the community. In trying to make an impactful campaign with our students, we try to highlight the six principles that help facilitate a drug-free lifestyle. These principles are finding a natural high that is your passion, for me, that's tennis, surrounding yourself with positive peer influences, finding a positive mentor to encourage you, Ms. Meister, having a firm belief in your talents and abilities, setting goals for your future, and building resilience to help you get through challenges in life. So personally, as an athlete, the well-being of my body is extremely important to me since I value success on the court as well as in my life. By choosing to avoid substances which could harm that success, I set myself up for a healthy path for the future. Since tennis is one of my greatest loves, I would never want something like drug or alcohol abuse to get in the way of me pursuing my passion. At the high school level, we are helping students build assets where they give back to their community through our annual food drive. We are also working with our GTV students to promote healthy decision-making through positive messages from the naturalhigh.org organization. Please take a moment to talk about healthy decision-making under pressure within your own families as well as in the community. Again, thank you for your time and attention to this important celebration.
Thank you, Grace. You and I were talking before the meeting, and you had shared with me that, well, you obviously shared with everybody, that your love is tennis, and that is your passion in life. And you've been on the tennis team at Geneva High School throughout your career. You are a star in the singles mostly, correct?
Not for doubles for school, but singles everywhere else.
Singles in life, if you will.
Yes, pretty much.
Okay. And how was doubles in school? Good?
Yeah, like a lot. It's fun team-building.
And today was the first practice for?
Club.
For club.
Yeah.
Next year, you were talking to me about heading off to college. And I just want to brag about this because you are considering multiple schools, including ... No, no, isn't that amazing? The University of Chicago amongst others, and you want to pursue your tennis career there as well.
Yes.
And as I understand it, you want to study biochem?
Yes.
Is that a subject?
A mix, I guess, yeah. To go on to be a doctor, hopefully.
But you said earlier, if not a doctor...
A lawyer, yeah.
Second class.
They're very different.
Your involvement in this club and in inspiring your peers to make good decisions, how did you come about this role in your life?
I just, my mom, she's back there, she is just like a very positive, impactful person to me, and she's my biggest role model, and she's always lived her life just avoiding completely all of those things that are, could end up being negative. And I've known people, and there's people in my family who have had alcohol, problems with alcohol, and just knowing that those things are so close to home sometimes, having somebody like my mom who's there for me and tells me that, you know, you should avoid this, it's not worth the risk, it just, I guess she's really just influenced me in a positive way, and yeah, pretty much.
Do you feel that your influence, the positive influence that you convey, has helped other students?
I hope so, because I'm very passionate about the club, like especially just to my friends. I'm like, "Come to SAD Club, it's an awesome club, we're not sad," you know? We really just want to like promote the healthy lifestyle, and I'm, I feel like I'm positive about it, so other people are like, "Oh, you know, Grace Hahn leads that." I mean, she's a happy person, I hope, you know? I hope I give off that sort of vibe, for lack of a better word.
I think you do.
I'd just be positive.
I think you do. And this is a sensitive question, I know, but how are things generally speaking with respect to your peer group?
Like my friend group or just the group at the high school?
Generally speaking.
I mean, there are people that I know personally, there are people that are, I just know of, who do participate in bad, in unhealthy behaviors at the high school, but we try as a club to not force it down their throats in a forceful way, but we do try to convey our message to those people who are struggling, because there are people at the high school who do have problems with those, like substance abuse and all that.
And the younger students in our community, according to my math, probably upwards of 4,000, because there's about 2,000 at the high school, they're watching you tonight because they all tune in every Monday evening for these meetings. What would you say to those younger students?
As much as you're pressured by other people, because there are a lot of pressures, don't give in to the negative pressures, because in your heart, you know that that's not the right thing to do, and just because your friends do it doesn't mean it's right.
Well said. I'd love to open it up to the council if there's any questions or comments for Grace from members of the city council. Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. Hi, Grace. Thanks so much for being here and sharing your message. I remember when you came to the city council meeting last year, and I was so impressed with your presentation then and all that you're doing for the high school community, for starters, and here you are again this year, and I'm just continually impressed by what you're doing. Thanks for your efforts. I know it's probably not easy sometimes, I'm sure it's probably frustrating, and maybe you hear of certain things going on among teenagers and you wish more kids were making better decisions and choices for themselves, healthier choices, but I just think it's wonderful that you're there, and so thanks also to your club moderator, Mrs. Meister, Ms. Meister. So I think it's really great to have your club at the high school, setting such a great example for the other students. And I just want to wish you a lot of luck next year as well. It'll be exciting to find out where you end up.
Yeah, it's complicated so far, so I'm just hoping I'll come to a decision eventually. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anyone else in the dais? Do I have a motion to so-proclaim the week of October 22nd through the 28th as Red Ribbon Week? Alderman McGowan makes the motion?
Second.
Alderman Bruno makes the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? May I present you the proclamation?
Of course.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
See you, too.
Actually, I will. I'll see you tomorrow. Yeah, I'll give them a poster tomorrow.
I know you do, there you go. Thank you, Ms. Meister. Well, we're on TV. Yeah, look at that. Do you know those guys?
Yes.
Do you?
Yes.
That's for you.
Thank you.
Now head back and practice your serves.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
And Grace and Ms. Meister and Mom, if you feel the urge to sneak out, we certainly understand. Item 3B, ladies and gentlemen, is to proclaim October 24th, 2018, as World Polio Day in the city of Geneva, Illinois. Is there such a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Bruno. We have some special guests with us today regarding this matter. Chuck, do you want me to recognize you? Mr. Miles?
Yeah, I got to follow that, huh?
Yeah. What's your favorite sport, Chuck?
It's first game of the season, the Packers and the Bears.
No kidding.
Any questions?
Microphones don't seem to be working.
What was that? How'd yesterday go? Okay.
Welcome.
So thank you to the city staff and council and the mayor for considering World Polio Day as a proclamation in the city of Geneva. I'm fortunate enough to be the president of Geneva Rotary this year. Rotary's been very involved in polio over the years, and I'll explain a little bit more about that, but I want to introduce Dave Nelson and Paula Crapp, who are members of our Rotary Club. So polio is something we don't hear so much about anymore, although it was kind of interesting in the news recently, there was the child, and I think from Batavia, that had a polio-like illness. I remind everybody, we're basically just one infected person on a plane away from having to deal with this all over again. So polio is a paralyzing and potentially fatal disease that still threatens children in some parts of the world. It invades the nervous system, causes paralysis in a matter of hours, it could strike at any age, but mainly affects children under five. It's incurable but completely vaccine-preventable. So in 1985, Rotary launched the Polio Plus Program, first initiative to tackle global polio eradication through the mass vaccination of children. Rotary's contributed more than 1.8 billion in countless volunteer hours to immunize more than 2.5 billion children in 122 countries. In addition, Rotary's advocacy efforts have played a role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $7.2 billion to the effort. Every year, 1.2 million Rotarians around the world, part of their dues goes to help fund this. The Global Polio Eradication Initiative was formed in 1988. In the late '80s, about 350,000 children every year were paralyzed by polio. So in 1988, the Global Polio Eradication Initiative was formed. It's a public-private partnership, includes Rotary, World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and governments of the world. Rotary's focus is advocacy, fundraising, volunteer recruitment, and awareness. Since 1988, through the efforts of all of these organizations, a lot of others, 16 million people now can walk without being paralyzed. So it's a huge undertaking and something that we tend not to pay too much attention to. Today, there's only three countries that have not stopped polio transmission of the polio virus: Afghanistan, Nigeria, and Pakistan. There's about 22 cases that have occurred last year. It's a reduction of more than 99.9% since the 1980s, when the world saw about 1,000 cases per day. The polio cases represented by the remaining 1% are the most difficult to prevent due to factors including geographical isolation, poor public infrastructure, armed conflict, and cultural barriers. Until polio is eradicated, which basically means vaccinations for everyone, all countries remain at risk of outbreaks. This isn't a small endeavor to take on. The expectation is that between 2013 and 2019, $7 billion has been spent worldwide to help eradicate polio. So Rotary will donate, will raise $50 million a year over a three-year period. Every dollar will be matched with two additional dollars from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Those funds help provide much-needed organizational support, medical personnel, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. If you're interested more on polio itself, I'd suggest you go to a website called npleo.org. There's very interesting information out there, all the way back before, when it was first found, the virus was first found in 1901, and Salk found the vaccine in 1955, and how polio has stopped its ravaging of the country, of countries or of the world. So it's what I had on polio and Rotary, and I appreciate you doing that. It kind of helps maybe celebrate a little bit what we've been able to do and hopefully get polio in the same situation as smallpox, which is the only virus that's been eradicated to date. I want to do put in a little bit of plug, since I'm here for Rotary, to, and I'll speak for my friends at Lyons and Kiwanis as well, although Rotary is the way cooler club. We meet every Tuesday morning, not every morning, every Tuesday morning at Riverside Receptions from 7 to 8. We have 23 current members, including an ex-alderman, Don Cummings, has been a longtime member. What we do is we raise money through selling the best food at Swedish Days, Ream's bratwurst, hot dogs, pulled pork, and roasted corn. And a smaller fundraiser we do, which raises about $22,000 a year. All that money goes back into funding things in the community. We fund about $5,500 in scholarships for high school students every year. We sponsor Rotary Youth Leadership Academy, which is training for youth leaders. We're trying to expand that. We also fund two exchange students that we share with St., one that we share with St. Charles East, and then one that we send overseas from the United States. The other thing we've just started is we are partnering with the Big Heart 5K Foundation, which does heart screening. Recently had a 5K at the end of August, which one of our city council members got an award for, right, Becky? Oh, you did, they didn't even stay to get it. So congratulations on that. As well as supporting a lot of other things, we support mutual ground. The big thing that you may know us for, over the last 35 years, we have had a Christmas party for the clients of the Association for Individual Development. I've been here numerous times talking about AID. I've been on that board now for 10 years, and we'll continue to do that. So we have that every year for the holiday season, and we have about 80 to 100 clients of AID come, and get to see Joe McMahon show up as Santa Claus and with his normal cheerful self. So that's all I have. If you're interested in any more about Rotary, genevahotary.org or npleo.org, if you want to find out a little bit more about polio.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Miles?
Uh-oh.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to amplify some of what you said. There is polio in my family at the, before vaccines were widespread. My cousin lives with it today, and he's on the lucky end of the spectrum. It's discomforting to see any type of resurgence in a truly devastating disease. A lot of people around this dais probably don't recollect it was a constant threat to your children. You didn't know, it was creeping in the night. You know, so it's, you know, the dismissal of vaccines by some contingents is very disheartening, and I applaud your work in this area. Thanks.
Well, thanks.
Anyone else in the dais? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Chuck.
Hi there, how are you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Great.
Thanks for being here and letting us...
The Packers are on tonight, so we need to...
You know what? Little secret about me, I'm not a football fan at all.
Neither are most sports fans at this point.
I never grew up with it, I, it's like a foreign language. But I'm very interested in everything that the Rotary Club is doing. It's just an amazing organization, both locally and throughout the world, really. So how did the Rotary Club first identify polio and polio vaccination as something that they wanted to really focus on? Do you know the kind of the history behind that?
I think, I know Rotary had been working, and I think there was some clubs, basically in the UK, I believe, started to try to get interested in doing something with polio. And then eventually, the broader organization picked it up, and I think in, was it 1985, Rotary started kind of as a bigger push to do something. Rotary started in about 1905, so this was, as far as I know, one of the first big international pushes they took on, and viewed it as a place where they thought they could provide, you know, the right type of people, the right type of support, working with, because Rotarians tend to be involved with people who are kind of well-connected, just like Lyons and Kiwanis, but are well-connected with their community, can get the voice of elected officials to try to find additional funding and work with them to get things done. So it's been very successful, not as successful as we ultimately want, but we're certainly working toward that. So again, I think there's more on that on npleo.org, if you want to go look at it, how Rotary got involved.
Yeah, I'll definitely check it out. Thank you.
Or you could join the club.
I will definitely take that into consideration.
Okay, well, you're getting my card before I leave.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to join the club?
We have a police officer here, so you cannot approach the dais. Any other comments from Mr. Miles or questions?
I'm more worried about you coming this way.
We do have a motion by Alderman Marx and a second by Alderman Bruno to so-proclaim Wednesday, I believe it is, October 24th.
Wednesday, October 24th.
As World Polio Day here in the city of Geneva. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you very much.
May I present to you the proclamation, sir?
Okay. Where'd the TV? Come on. Dave's going to take our picture.
All right, Dave, come on, Paul.
All right, you, sir. One more. One, two, three, thanks.
Thanks for being nice to me.
You're welcome. Continuing, ladies and gentlemen, we are to... Oh, yeah, by all means, if anyone needs to sneak out, they can, obviously, but we just had an update, the Packers forfeited. Item four, ladies and gentlemen, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be retained by this council and can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Marx makes a motion to approve the omnibus agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Radecki. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Clements?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Malodra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Radecki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Item five, the omnibus agenda passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes. We skip to item number 9A. 9A is to recommend acceptance of the fiscal year 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion by Marx, the seconded by, we're going to give this one to Swanson. And now we have a presentation by our finance manager, Rita Cruz, who I trust will introduce our special guest.
Yes, I will, in a moment.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jason Coyle from Baker Tilly Virchow Kraus is here to present the fiscal year 2018 audit. Before he begins, I have some opening remarks about the audit. This year was another year of changes, a new auditing firm. Staff worked with Baker Tilly to ensure a smooth transition. Since budget season is just around the corner, here's a brief update to the three major funds positions at the end of the fiscal year 2018. As a reminder, the city's policy is to strive to maintain a 25% fund balance in the general fund and a 25% cash balance in the electric and water wastewater fund. The general fund ended better than projected in the fiscal year 18 budget creation. Savings were primarily due to staff watching their expenditures, a decrease in transfer from other funds, coupled with an increase in local use tax, i.e. the Amazon tax, and permit fees. The general fund unassigned fund balance is 5.2 million, while the total fund balance is 5.4 million. As a percentage of expenditures, unassigned fund balance is 32.2%, up from 30.8% from the fiscal year 2017. And the total fund balance is 33.2%, up from 32.6% from fiscal year 17. The electric fund is at 30.6% of cash balance, while the water wastewater fund is 42.2%. At the end of fiscal year 2018, all funds listed in our fund balance policy are in compliance. For more high-level interpretation of the audited financial statements for your reading pleasure, the management discussion and analysis begins on page MDNA 1. Thank you for all the hard work of the finance, HR, and IT divisions in assisting us through the audit process and the support from the city administrator through the fiscal year 2018. I will turn it over to Jason to discuss the audit results. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, it's good to be with you. Rita just stole half my thunder there with all her updates, but we, I will go over a few things with you. We do issue with the city's help your Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. This happens to be a bound copy, I know you have an electronic copy that was in your packet, and as I referenced, just a few things in here, I'll try to reference the pages in your packet. But you do continue to issue a CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It's a level of reporting that goes kind of above and beyond what you're actually required to report, which is great, because it has some additional information, particularly at the front with the transmittal letter, and at the back with a lot of statistical information, which goes 10 years into history. So it's just a higher level of transparency that you're providing to whoever might be using these financial statements, whether it be yourself, or the community members, bondholders, whatnot. So congratulations on continuing to do that. Excuse me, I'm fighting a cold here. Our, the information in here that comes from my firm is only a couple pages long, and that's our opinion, which starts on page one, which is page 70 of your slide in your board packet, or council packet, excuse me. That level of assurance is unchanged from the past, our opinion is unqualified or unmodified, it's a clean opinion, which again, the highest level of assurance we could give over your financial information. Basically, what that means in layman's terms is that who's ever utilizing the financial information in here can rely upon it in all material respects to evaluate the health of the city. So that's basically what it means. As Rita mentioned, there's a section right after our opinion called MDNA Management's Discussion Analysis. I know that everyone comes to the council looking to read 160-some pages worth of financial statements, so I would encourage you to at least read through the MDNA. Rita does a good job of putting together that, and it just says a high level, gives a good summary of what went on during the year, pulls out some highlights, there's some nice graphs and charts and comparisons to the prior year in there, too. So I would encourage you to read that. Really, the meat of the financial statements, though, starts on page three of the printed page, page seven, page, excuse me, 83 of what's in your packet, and that's the statement of net position. This basically takes all the funds of the city and kind of collapses them down into two different columns, your business type being primarily your water, sewer, and electric fund, and then your governmental activities being everything else. The big point on this page, or these two pages, excuse me, is that a few years ago, as you might recall, your net pension liabilities were placed on your financial statements for the first time, and those, particularly in the state of Illinois, tend to be rather large numbers. And so it pushed your unrestricted net position, which is kind of everything that's left over after you take all your assets and subtract out all your liabilities, into a negative position. So that is a negative $6.2 million in total when we look at it. Your net pension liabilities in the current year were $24.7 million. So if you were to take that out of there, if you will, you'd have a positive unrestricted net position. Obviously, you can't, because the standards say they need to be in there, you know, but this is still a relatively new standard that required it to be on here. I always like to point out what that would look like without that. The good thing is that your net pension liabilities did come down from last year. Last year, they were $29.5 million, so it came down a few million dollars over last year, related to your continued contributions to them, obviously, but also to some of the good investment returns. I do want to point out while I'm on this page, similar to what happened a few years ago with that net pension liability being placed on these financial statements, next statements, next year, a new standard is going to place another liability on your financial statements related to what we call OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits. That's some benefits you provide to retirees other than pensions, as the name implies, primarily some health insurance. So there's a relatively small liability, in grand scheme of things, about $1 million, that'll be placed on here. Not a new liability, the liability's always been there, it's disclosed in your notes, always has been disclosed in notes, but now, similar to the pension standard, will be placed on the financial statements. So wanted to point that out. I'll flip a couple more pages, I'll really just talk about two more pages in here. Page 10 of the printed and page 90 in yours, these are the governmental funds. There's a general fund here, and the general fund, your primary operating fund, increased fund balance by $750,000, rounding that off. I always like to look at the ratio there, as Rita mentioned, you're at 36% when you compare that fund balance to your expenditures for the year. And then your non-major fund, which is all the other funds of the city that aren't proprietary funds, increased $1.1 million. Majority of that relates to the wetland credit in the Prairie Green. So that's almost all of it, quite frankly. The rest mostly net themselves out. So overall, your governmental funds increased by $1.8 million. Flip over just a couple pages to your proprietary funds, these are page 14 or page 94 for you. These are the funds that are meant to be self-supporting, if you will, the charges for services are meant to support the operations, so property taxes aren't going into these funds. So your electric and wastewater and waterworks are primarily what's in here. And the thing I always like to look for is, are the revenues supporting the operations? And the net position in all those funds increased, so that at least for the time being, without consideration of, you know, future infrastructure improvements and things like that, the charges are maintaining the expenses. And that's really all I'll touch on in this financial statement. In the back, there's a lot of great detail, if you really want to get into it, that shows all the detail and budget to actual of all the different funds further into the statement. The other thing I want to go through is, we do give a communication, looks like this, I think this is earlier on, before the financial statements within your packet. When we come in to do the audit of the city, one of the things we do is we kick the tires on your internal controls, so your checks and balances, if you will. We do that as we plan the audit, to identify if there's any risks in your operations that we might need to apply some audit tests around. But the byproduct of that is, if there's any recommendations we might have to improve your internal controls, we're going to do that, we're going to give that to you. And so there's three recommendations in here related to segregation of duties. And before I get into them, I do want to say one thing. This report only focuses on our recommendations. There's a lot of great things the city does when it comes to checks and balances and internal controls, but we don't highlight that in this report, obviously. This is just the recommendation. So I don't want, I just want to put that in the proper perspective. So there are three recommendations, and none of them met the criteria of what we call a material weakness, which is kind of the most concerning. These are both significant deficiencies, which is kind of down a notch in definition. One related to payroll, one related to utilities, and one related to journal entries, all around the same idea of segregation of duties. Segregation of duties basically means you don't want one or limited people doing a transaction from the very beginning to the very end. You'd like additional people within the process. Obviously, a smaller municipality, a smaller finance department, inherently, you're going to have a little bit more concern about segregation of duties than you would in a very large organization that has a lot of people. So it's not uncommon to have some concerns here. So we just highlighted those in here, and I know management's put a response in here as well about some things they're thinking of doing to mitigate these and correct these in the future. So I won't go into them in detail, but I would encourage you to read those and just understand those risks, and then management will be taking some action on that, so. And with that, I will open it up to any questions you have or anything you want me to go into in further depth.
The floor is open for questions for our guests. Anyone from the dais?
Very good.
Wow.
Maybe I talked too long and explained too much, then, but...
Alderman Rodecky.
Well, I don't have a question for our guests, so you're good. I guess it's for the city and for the council in general, and that has to do with our surplus. You know, we had established a goal of 25%. We're at, in the general fund, and we're at 33...
32.2.
Okay.
33.
Okay, so I'll live the spirit of Chuck Brown, who used to always say, geez, you know, that's the citizens' money that we're holding in surplus, and, you know, we had a stated goal of 25, we have 33, that's 20% more money than we really had above goal for surplus. I'm a rainy day fun kind of guy, I'm not too bad with that, but I think at some point we should have some discussion, is it, you know, what is that earmarked for? Is that the appropriate amount? Should we scale it back to 25%? Because, you know, that's the citizens' money, that's not our money that we're hanging on in surplus right now. So I think it's just something for discussion and consideration at some point, so, thank you.
Please do.
Those discussions will likely take place during this next budget cycle.
Anyone else? Alderman Kilburg.
Just clarification, this is your second year of a three-year contract that we have?
First year.
First year of a three-year contract.
First year that we've come in.
Gotcha.
Anyone else on the dais? We have a motion by Marx, a second by Swanson to accept this report. All in favor of accepting the report as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. The report is accepted. Thank you both very, very much.
Thank you very much. Good to be with you.
Thank you. Item 10, ladies and gentlemen, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Total bills for payment, $5,583,815.18.
Mayor, I move, we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
The motion may be Alderman Bruno to pay the bills as presented, which are also available in our packet and on the city's website, is seconded by Alderman Burkhardt. Any additional questions or comments? Alderman Rodecky.
One, just a quick question for Stephanie. I think I know the answer to this. I'm sorry I didn't get it off early enough for you to respond to everybody and post it, but the $1 million transfer to Motorola, was that for Tricom, our contribution to the upgrade of the system that hit?
That is correct. That's actually Tricom's budget, so it's not our contribution, it's actually Tricom's reserves into their budget.
Which they...
And then they purchased those radios, so that money is out the door.
Right, and most of that money, they got through grants anyway, didn't they? Score a huge grant, so that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, take the roll call.
Clements.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Malodra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Rodecky.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
And Burkhardt.
Aye.
Clements.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Malodra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Rodecky.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Clements.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Rodecky.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Nay.
Clements.
Aye.
Item 11A passes with nine affirmative votes, one nay vote, zero absence, and zero abstains. We skip to, according to my scorecard, item 12A. Item 12A is to recommend approval of ordinance number 2018-34, granting a zoning ordinance map amendment to rezone 304 East Side Drive from the R3 medium to high-density, single-family residential district to the, excuse me, R6 medium-density, two- and three-family residential district. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Marx.
Seconded.
Seconded by Alderman Swanson. This matter is on the floor for discussion. Are there any specific discuss, or excuse me, questions or comments for either Director DeGroot? Facing the information presented, Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. David, I watched the video of the Plan Commission with the concept review. Would you expect that the ostensible developer is looking to change, oh, wait a second, looking at the wrong item here. Nope, I'm good.
With the city attorney was anxious over here, just to kind of... Anyone else? Any questions or comments for Director DeGroot? Alderman Burkhardt.
Tonight, we're only, I'm sorry, I mean, tonight, we're only considering the zoning. We're not talking about the specific plan that would...
That's correct. The zoning, though, would grant by right development for duplexes, so it would not come back before the Plan Commission or the city council. They would just be building permits issued.
Gotcha. Where does the developer stand on sidewalks for this? Obviously, I know there's a sidewalk on East Side Drive. Is he, he's not required to put in sidewalks on the rest of the property?
It's not a subdivision, so it's not a requirement.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks. That's it. Thanks.
Is there anyone in the audience regarding this matter that would like to address the Ladies and gentlemen, we have a motion by, I believe it was Alderman Marx, seconded by Alderman Kilburg. Swanson, forgive me. A roll call vote would be in order. Mr. Clerk, whenever you're prepared.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Malodra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Rodecky.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Clements.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Item 12A passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes. We move on to new business and public comment. I curtsy to those attending the meeting today. Anyone in the audience have any new business or public comment for the city council? Excuse me, new business and public comment from the audience, from the dais? Alderman Kilburg.
Mayor, today I know all the Aldermen received the letter that you drafted and sent to the Kane County Board as relates to Settlers Hill. For the benefit of those watching, you might elaborate a little bit on that, and I know that you attended the county board meeting last week and expressed some concerns as it relates to some overtures on the part of Kane County that's related to the old sheriff's property, essentially. Would you be so kind as to maybe comment?
Absolutely. For the benefit of those who have received the letter by way of background, as requested by Alderman Kilburg, and for those of you tuning in, today, a letter was sent to the Kane County Board. The letter was addressed to Chairman Chris Lawson and Administrative Committee Board Chairman Deborah Allen. I had the honor of attending a meeting at the Kane County Administrative Committee meeting on Wednesday, October 10th, when the matter concerning issuance of a request for qualifications was discussed ever so briefly regarding the redevelopment of the erstwhile Kane County jail site. There were documents prepared that day and distributed just prior to the meeting that talked about the RFQ. All of you received a copy of that document as well. There were some inconsistencies in that RFQ that I thought it important to identify and communicate that with the chairman and with the committee chairman, Ms. Allen. I did so based on my commentary at that meeting on October 10th. I did state very emphatically and very proudly that the city of Geneva stands ready to work with our friends at Kane County and any and all developers who come forward with respect to the proposition of redeveloping that site. But the city of Geneva, and I believe I use the words formally and forcefully, require that we be at that table when these discussions take place. So the nature of that letter is to pretty much put in writing what my comments were and to reinforce to the Kane County Board and others that the city of Geneva is well aware of what's transpiring. We're excited about what's moving ahead, but we need to be more involved as things continue. And by all means, I'm happy to answer any questions at all.
Yes, this is my day for questions. Was it, maybe it's not a fair question to ask you, but it was kind of a, thank you for the update and the letter, and it's important to bring this stuff up now. Were you under the impression that, you know, this was a Scribner's era, that they missed the fact that this is in Geneva's purview, or was this, you know, were they truly laboring under the assumption that they thought that they had more jurisdiction over this property than what is true?
That's a very, very good question.
You haven't got the answer.
Well, to say so delicately, myself, Kathleen, and others have attended numerous meetings at the county with respect to the site. I know that all of you are well aware of machinations regarding the redevelopment of the site have been going on for years and years and years. So to read in that RFQ document, or to perhaps not see in that RFQ document, the reference to city of Geneva's jurisdiction was a little bit concerning. So I think I would say this, I'll give credit to Chairman Allen and the Administrative Committee for acknowledging openly that such corrections will be made and such notifications were appreciated. So hopefully, moving forward, it'll be perhaps smoother sailing when it comes to working with would-be developers, the county, et cetera, to develop something that complements our southeast corridor. Anyone else? Last chance, anyone in the audience, new business, public comment regarding anything? If not, we're going to take a one-minute recess and then jump to a special committee of the whole meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting. Motion by Marx.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bruno. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Are we ready, ladies and gentlemen, to convene a special committee of the whole meeting? Without objection, the special committee of the whole meeting is called to order. Let the record show that all the Aldermen have chose to stick around. Item two, ladies and gentlemen, which is the policy discussion on affordable housing. Let me state from the beginning, there's no action being taken tonight. Staff is not seeking direction or action from the committee. This is primarily, and I think it's fair to state, an informational presentation regarding this topic. So with that said, I am happy to recognize our director, Mr. DeGroot, who returns to the podium for the 17th time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. The mayor's correct. Just trying to give a kind of an informational presentation. I tried to keep it as concise as I could, but there is a lot of information, so I will try to move through it quickly and go through discussion and questions at the end. Affordable housing has been a discussion in the city for several years now, since the adoption of the downtown master plan in 2012. We have a stated goal to encourage diversity of residential housing in and near the downtown, including affordable senior housing and workforce housing. Affordable housing was also a key component of the Homes for a Changing Region Plan that was adopted in 2014, and I'll focus on that plan a little later in the presentation. But earlier this evening, the council adopted the new strategic plan for the city. Under economic vitality, it was recognized that a well-functioning economy needs housing options available at all income levels to support its workforce. And then one of the action items in that section was to hold a study session with the city council on affordable housing. In that same plan, under the Quality of Life section, we have a outcome that we want to have economically diverse housing options that appeal to families and individuals at all stages of life and from all backgrounds, ages, and ethnicities. And again, an action item there was to hold a study session with the city council to discuss affordable housing. So here we are. The presentation this evening, again, is intended to be informational, but hopefully it can serve as kind of the starting point for more serious discussions on the topic. In order to have those discussions, I think it's important that we understand the definition of affordable housing in the development community. And to understand that, we need a little bit of background on the Affordable Housing Planning and Appeal Act, or OPAA for short. It was passed in 2003. The law recognized that many people who are vital to local economies and provide critical community services can't afford to live in the places that they work. It established a process for identifying communities with a shortage of local housing that would be affordable to home buyers making 80% or less of the regional median income, or to renters making 60% or less of the regional median income. Communities that do not have at least 10% of their housing stock affordable at these income levels are identified as non-exempt local governments. The law requires those local governments to adopt and submit an affordable housing plan. So in 2013, the city received notice that we were identified as a non-exempt local government with only 5.2% of our housing stock identified as affordable. A little bit more on the definition of affordable housing. Affordable rental housing means that an individual is not paying more than 30% of their gross annual income on rent and utilities. And again, that's for people making 60% or less of the regional median income. Affordable owner-occupied housing means that you're spending no more than 30% of your mortgage, insurance, association fees, et cetera. mortgage, insurance, association fees, et cetera, for people making 80% of their regional median income. And then, in real numbers, these charts display what affordable rental housing and affordable owner-occupied housing would be in the City of Geneva today. These are updated numbers. A one-bedroom apartment would be affordable at $952 a month compared to the fair market rent of $1330 a month. A four-person family living in a three-bedroom house would be affordable at about $240,000 compared to a median home value in Geneva of $305,000. And then the regional median household income, again, these are updated numbers. You have the 80% and 60% levels for households of different sizes. And then at the bottom of the slide are examples of public sector positions, people that work in and for the community, who cannot afford to rent or own on their own in the City of Geneva. There are, of course, several examples in the private sector as well, such as nursing assistants, dental assistants, caregivers, sales associates, and store managers. So that's how affordable housing is defined pursuant to the Act. With Geneva not meeting the 10% threshold, the city was required to adopt and submit an affordable housing plan. Per the Act, a plan has to include a statement of the total number of units that are required to meet that 10% threshold, has to identify lands within the city that could be developed for affordable housing or redeveloped for affordable housing, and has to identify incentives that the government may provide for the purpose of attracting affordable housing to the community. In addition, the plan must have a stated goal, select one of the following for its stated goal. A minimum of 15% of all new development or redevelopment within the city would be defined as affordable housing, a minimum of a 3% increase in the overall percentage of affordable housing within the city, or a minimum of 10% of affordable housing within its jurisdiction to either meet the threshold or one of the other two goals. So in 2014, with the adoption of the Homes for a Changing Region Plan, we satisfied those requirements of the Act. We identified that 363 affordable units are needed to meet that 10% threshold. We created a map that showed lands and structures that might be appropriate for affordable housing. We had a recommendation to create an incentive-based zoning district that would kind of be an overlay district that would encourage affordable housing through incentives, and a goal that 15% of all our new housing units would be affordable. This map was updated about a year after the plan was adopted because several of the sites had been developed already. And since the 2015 update, those orange shades shows the suitable sites. We've had additional developments that have come through. The red X's represent either properties that have been developed or underway, or had already obtained approvals for developments that are not affordable housing. So when you look at this information, it's reasonable to ask if Geneva can realistically meet the 10% threshold and become a non-exempt community. The Act does not require us to meet that 10% threshold. It provides that as we grow, we should seek to include affordable housing as part of our housing stock. So communities like Geneva that are built out and don't have a lot of land available often choose that that goal of 15% of all new housing should be affordable housing and not necessarily meeting that 10% threshold. But in addition to the requirements of OPAA, there's actually a real demand for affordable housing in Geneva. The Homes for a Changing Region Plan projected housing and rental needs for the community. This graph is confusing every time I look at it, but I will try to walk you through it. So the hatch marks show the 2011 housing stock at 30% of the regional household income. The light blue shows the demand in 2011, and the dark blue shows the projected demand in 2040. So as shown in this chart, there are shortfalls for low, moderate, and middle-income households, but there's also a potential for upscale housing, which we've seen quite a bit of over the past few years in the developments that have come through. It also projected our rental needs, so kind of the same chart here, the hatch marks represent the 2011 levels. The light orange is the projected demand in 2011, and the dark orange is the projected demand in 2040. As shown again here, there's shortfalls for households below $35,000 and a potential market for households earning more than $75,000. So again, the question is if there's a high demand for affordable housing and a law that strongly encourages it, why haven't we seen more projects come through for entitlements in Geneva? And the truth is, it's because we have high land values. We don't have a lot of tools to incentivize it. We haven't adopted any requirements or provided density bonuses or anything. And we have rather low-density zoning to begin with. So it's difficult to get a number of units to come through. So now I'd like to take a few minutes and walk through some of the tools that are available to the city if we want to make an impact and provide some more affordable housing. The first is simply incentives. These could take the form of an overlaying zoning district where there's density bonuses are given, or other zoning standards may be flexible if it's an affordable housing development. Again, having a low base zoning kind of creates a potential for compelling incentives. You can have expedited reviews for affordable housing, or a reduction of fees can also be offered as an incentive. Another tool is to make it a requirement. Inclusionary zoning requires all-new development over a certain threshold to set aside a certain percentage of the units in the development as affordable. And oftentimes, those ordinances will have an option for a payment in lieu of. This can be a powerful tool in markets where there are high land values. Our neighbors to the north in St. Charles do have an inclusionary housing ordinance that includes both incentives and requirements, and they meet the 10% threshold, so they're an exempt community. But they offer density bonuses, flexibility on zoning standards, and a waiver of fees for developments that comply. Developments between 1 and 15 units have to provide at least 5% of affordable units. Developments over 15 must provide at least 10% affordable units. If they don't provide the units, they pay a fee of $36,410 for each unit that is not That fee is then deposited into the Housing Trust Fund. Those dollars are collected and then contributed to the Kane County Affordable Housing Fund, which provides gap financing to developers for affordable housing. Contributions from St. Charles have to be spent in St. Charles. The county can also use those funds for other St. Charles programs, such as the Home Rehab and Accessibility Program or the First-Time Home Buyer Program. Another tool for consideration would be accessory dwelling units. These can be second units within an existing house, added onto a house, or in a detached structure on the site. They're also known as garage apartments, granny flats, second units, but more commonly now, accessory dwelling units. They can increase the affordability not only for people looking for rent in Geneva, but for the homeowners in Geneva as a source of income. They provide a wider range of housing in the community, and they work, they can add density into the community within the existing fabric of the neighborhoods. Common provisions for accessory dwelling units is that the owner, it must be owner-occupied, the principal dwelling must be owner-occupied. There's often parameters on how large they can be and design requirements, and then off-street parking requirements to make sure if we're adding density and we're not creating on-street parking problems. In addition to providing affordable housing, they can also be great units for seniors that want to be close to family, for caregivers of individuals, for boomerang children, or for guests coming in from out of town. One of the few tools that we do have in place is tax increment financing, TIF districts. They can be used to support the goals and objectives of other overlapping plans, such as our strategic plan, downtown master plan, and Homes for a Changing Region Plan. Eligible costs in a TIF district include the cost of studies, surveys, developments of plans and specifications, marketing to prospective developers, assembling properties, rehabbing, reconstructing, or remodeling existing buildings, and public works or other improvements. So contributing those costs can help make affordable housing possible. In addition, interest costs incurred by a developer related to the construction, renovation, or rehab of a project can be reimbursed through TIF assistance. Typically, that's capped at 30%, but if it's for an affordable housing project, that goes up to 75%. So the city has the option to do that, or the city has the option, instead of that, to just pay 50% of the cost of construction, renovation, or rehab for affordable housing. It's not the only remaining tool, but the last one I'll cover tonight, low-income housing tax credits. It's a very popular tool for the development of affordable housing. If a project qualifies for the credit, the sale of those credits can create a lot of equity for the project. A tax credit project is typically a fixed rent unit in a mixed-income development where the majority of units are affordable. To qualify, at least 40% of the units must be affordable. So that makes it much different than like an inclusionary zoning project where only a small percent is affordable. Tax credit projects must be deed restricted to maintain their affordability for at least 15 years, with an additional 15-year period where project owners can apply for relief or opt out of the affordability requirements. It's a popular program because it can also be combined with other programs, whether they're related to affordable housing or not. For example, they can be combined with historic preservation tax credits and other programs to make projects more feasible. I'll do the update later. So the scoring for a tax credit application is broken down into six categories. I put an asterisk here next to the community characteristics because projects in Geneva score high because we're a non-exempt local government. If a project's located in a non-exempt local government, they get more points. They also get points for neighborhood assets such as mass transit, open space, civic uses, schools, fresh food. Extra points if it's equitably distributed throughout the community, you're not clustering affordable housing in one area. So if projects do score high, and it is a very competitive process, so every year we get a lot of interest, and projects may come through or might not. But there are tiebreaker criteria, and those tiebreakers include tenant population of individuals with children, projects with the longest affordability periods, if they opt for the 30-year period instead of the 15, they would score higher, projects that have historical significance, so if they are adaptively reusing a resource, that would score higher, and then projects that have tenant ownership. So we do routinely receive inquiries because of our status as a non-exempt local government. Typically, developers are looking for two and a half to five acres and somewhere in the range of 50 to 60 units. They're looking for close proximity to those amenities like grocery stores, parks, pharmacies. Although we haven't had an application yet, I imagine that we will sometime in the near future. And I think when we receive that application, one of the concerns we're likely to hear is the impact on property values, and it's a legitimate concern with any type of development that comes into the community. You want to know if it's going to add value to the community. I will forward some of the studies that I have found on the topic to the council for your consideration, and hopefully we can get into that more at our next discussion on the topic. But a 2005 review of literature on the topic indicated that most projects do not have a negative impact. It also shows that sites in economically strong communities are the most successful and have the least negative impacts. A 2013 study found that affordable housing was not associated with increased crime, decreased property values, or increased taxes. Additional studies along the same lines found that negative impacts occur when the quality, design, and management of affordable housing is poor, when affordable housing is located in dilapidated neighborhoods that contain disadvantaged populations, or when affordable housing is clustered. But they found that there were no impacts or positive impacts when affordable housing is cited in healthy and vibrant neighborhoods, when the structure of affordable housing does not change the character or quality of the neighborhood in which it's located, when the management of affordable housing is responsive to problems and concerns, and when it is dispersed throughout the region or community. This is my last slide. Thank you for being patient. As noted earlier, the city doesn't have to categorically accept any proposal that comes through for affordable housing. We can deny a request or impose reasonable conditions on an affordable housing proposal. However, if a project is denied or approved with conditions and the developer feels that they have been treated unfairly, they have the right to appeal to the State Housing Appeals Board. If they feel like the conditions made the project financially infeasible, that would be grounds, or if they felt the project was intentionally or unreasonably delayed, that would be grounds for an appeal. So if it gets to that level, the board can then affirm, reverse, or modify the city's decision, and that board's decision is then constitutes an order and is binding on the local government. So obviously, that's a position none of us want to be in, and I think why it's important that we have these discussions and figure out how we can effectively integrate affordable housing into the community.
Thank you, Mr. DeGroot. Happy to entertain questions or comments from the committee first. Alderman Swanson, Alderman Bruno, Alderman Maladra.
Thank you, David. That's very informative. A lot of the numbers appear to be based on old data. For example, the number of units that we need to achieve 10%, I believe it was 363. That goes back to 2013?
Right. So that number's likely higher now with the development that's happened since then.
And my question is, do we have plans to update that? Or I know in the strategic plan, we were talking about updating the Homes for a Changing Region. Have we reached out to the other communities, and are we going to do that, or is that, are those talks still in the negotiation stage?
We haven't done that at this point. But I think that that's something that should be done, is to refresh the numbers, because the next update from the state is probably coming soon, and we'll have better data. So it'd be good to update our affordable housing plan at that point.
Okay. And for the regional income number, how do they define regional? Do you know?
It's the Chicago Naperville-Joliet region, metro region. It's not...
So it's a wide encompassing area?
It's a much larger region than like the tri-cities or Geneva.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation, a lot of great information, so I appreciate that. Will this be online?
Yes, we put all of the presentations online.
Great. And for anyone that follows my Aldermanic Facebook page, I apparently have some incorrect information out there, so I will be updating that. Does home rule, does not enter into any of this? We have all of these tools unencumbered by our non-home rule status?
I don't believe it does.
Thank you.
Alderman Maladra. Clements?
So first of all, home rule comes into play, I think, one of your conditions or one of your examples of where affordable housing has no impact is when the property owner is responsible. I think home rule gives us the tools we need to hold property owners responsible. But that wasn't, I wasn't going to ask that. You went pretty fast through a lot of these slides, so can you go back to the slide about what rents would be and things like that? Just trying to understand the framework within which we're going to have to make decisions. So according to this, then, an affordable studio... So according to this, then, an affordable studio would be $889 a month, whereas it's $1160 on the market. Is that the way I read this thing? And then the other sort of factual question I had, it seemed that early on you said that the law may have no impact on communities that are at build-out, or almost at build-out, practically speaking, we are. But then afterwards, you talked about the appeals board. So I guess what I'm getting at is, can the state compel us either directly or through the appeals board or not?
If a project is applied for and denied, or approved with conditions that make it appear that they were treated unfairly, then it would go to the appeals board, and that's the only case it would go to, the appeals board. The slide about having little to no impact on a built-out community was more about the volume, I guess. When you're a built-out community and you have little opportunities, let's say our deficit was 1,000 units and we have the capacity to grow 500, you know, we're not going to get there. But if we make an effort to make sure that portions of our new housing stock is affordable, that's what the spirit of the law is.
Okay. Thanks.
Alderman Clemens, then Alderman Rodecky.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, David. Very interesting. Alderman Maladra kind of took my question a little bit there at the beginning of his statement. I noticed that as well in the area where you said there's no impact or positive impact. And one of those things was that the management is responsive to concerns of the tenants. What kind of concerns would those be, and if there are concerns and the management's not responding to them, what tools would we have to make them respond?
Well, as a non-home rule community, we don't have a rental licensing inspection program. If we were home rule, we would have that ability, so it really comes down to, you know, reviewing proposals that come before us and understanding what their portfolio is and their experience and reputation is as an affordable housing developer.
So we just have to make sure we're picking a good management group to...
Right.
Okay. And I also was interested in those accessory dwelling units. Is there, do you see there being a lot of places in Geneva where that would be an option? Like what, where would we see those kind of things pop up? And can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Frankly, I think we've seen a lot of those pop up, especially in and near the downtown area and the higher-density, single-family neighborhoods. Some may have been established many years ago, but we do have several kind of garage apartments or accessory dwelling units that had occurred without permits over time. But I think that's something we would need to look closer at, what areas might be appropriate and maybe accommodate a little additional density on street parking for additional units. I mean, that would have to be studied pretty closely.
Thank you.
Alderman Rodecky.
Thank you, and thank you, David. Craig, you know, I think you're right about the home rule question, and Mike, I think there, if we spent a little more time analyzing it, it would help us achieve or get a little bit closer to some of the goals that we would like to with affordable housing. And I guess my only other comment, David, and you know, I think about what we've been doing and what the projects that we've approved in the last couple of years, I don't believe there's a housing development that we've approved that has been under, keeping an eye on the MLS, you know, prices of anywhere from $550 to $575 to a million plus. So I think our median housing price is, the gap is much greater between what is defined as affordable and what we're actually going to see. That number is only going to continue to grow with, you know, the type of projects that we're approving, and of course, a lot of that has to do with the land value and developers maximizing their profit on it. So we have some monumental challenges with this, and I see these growing rather than closing right now. So anyway, thank you.
Alderman Kilberg.
Could you elaborate a little bit more on accessory dwelling units and what the possibilities might be there? And have we had any interest at all at, I would call it a guest house is sort of another term you could use. Have we had any interest in Geneva at all along those lines? And, you know, what's the potential here? What are the limiting, what might be the limiting factors there? This would require zoning changes to accommodate? Any thoughts on that at all?
We did have interest with the recently approved C-tron Place development. There were provisions within that PUD to allow accessory dwelling units there. Provisions there, again, were that they are able to park at least one additional vehicle in addition to the single-family home. We would have to refine maybe an overlay district where these would be allowed, where we think there is some potential. We have provisions in the code now that allow for senior citizen accessory dwelling units, and we have a few of those that have occurred in the community. But overall, I guess we haven't seen a large interest, but they're not allowed either. So...
So the same criteria would apply, though, as far as actually apartment construction or new housing construction, right?
If it's a stacked unit, there would likely need to be fire suppression, and we haven't gotten to that level of detail with the fire department, but I believe you're correct on that. But if it's a detached structure, it probably wouldn't.
Thank you. Alderman Berger.
I'll say, I love the idea of the ADUs, and I have had interest from especially one resident in my ward who has a child with special needs, and as they see him aging out of high school, they'd like to give him some independence, but also keep him close. And they asked me about that, and it's something I've been meaning to talk to you about what exactly would be needed for something like that over their garage. And I was excited when we saw him with C-tron Place, too. And I know they're quite the rage in California, right, David, where there are a lot of zoning changes going on to try to...
California, Seattle, Portland, yeah. All the major metropolitan areas, it's kind of a trend, yeah.
Yeah. So could you walk me through, like, an example of how an incentive-based, or the overlay district, what do you mean by that? Could you give me, say, we have Smith Street and Jones Street and, you know, four block areas, would it be a special kind of, what would be the, would we be saying we're trying to encourage affordable housing here, so we're going to do A, B, and C for...
Right. I mean, it would be kind of a blanket that you would throw over an area and say that any development within this area could qualify for density bonuses if they provide affordable housing. So if the maximum density on a site is five, the way St. Charles does it is, if you provide one affordable, you can now have six units on the site and increase your density that way. And that's just one example. So we can tailor it to our needs and our neighborhoods.
And like Mike mentioned, I think I thought some of these were restricted to home rule, so there's actually more tools than I thought we had. But yet, I know when we were talking to Marquette, when they had proposed the apartments, and I think Mike and I said, "Well, you know, would you think about doing, you know, 25 of them affordable?" And, you know, Marquette said, "No, no, no, that's not, we don't do that. That's not what we do. We do market value apartments. That's for something else." And so it feels like there's developers that really specialize in affordable housing, go for the credits, and then there's ones that do fair, you know, the market value. But do, does St. Charles see any success with developers actually doing five apartments that maybe have, you know, Formica countertops instead of granite? Or are there ways that they do that? Or are developers more likely to say, like, "Here's your $36,000 and..."
Right. I think that assessment is fair. That's been our experience, too, is that there are developers that specialize in affordable housing, and that's what they do. There are market rate developers. So that's why the fee in lieu of is often a crucial component of an inclusionary zoning ordinance. So if you're going to have market rate, you're still going to get a contribution at least to the community for the next affordable housing project and decide how you're going to allocate those dollars. So I think the former is probably correct, that you're going to see either a specialized affordable housing development with 40 to 60 units, or you're going to see a market rate development with, maybe they will try to incorporate it, or they'll pay the fee in lieu of.
And then I thought I'd heard about North Shore communities would take the money when the developers would pay the money and kind of bundle it, and then purchase even like homes that they would get refurbished so that you had affordable housing, obviously the North Shore that has even higher income than us, but, you know, so you'd have kind of scattered homes throughout the communities that were affordable. I don't, I would be surprised that cities would get into the business of trying to flip houses, but am I making that up?
No, no, that's accurate. That was actually one of the recommendations of the Homes Plan, and we looked into it with our partners in the Homes for a Changing Region Plan, North Aurora, Batavia, and St. Charles. And we actually budgeted for a feasibility study to see if we can create a community land trust for that type of purpose. We take those ones, and then we purchase properties or rehab properties and keep them as affordable housing. But that ultimately didn't go through, not all the communities on board, and then the administration of that is, it's a whole other branch of government, really. So what St. Charles has done with theirs is they've collected the funds, and then they give it to the King County Affordable Housing Fund, and just with an intergovernmental agreement stipulate that those funds have to be spent in St. Charles, which is a much simpler way to manage it if you're a small community.
And then are we talking with these, any kind of qualifications for if you're a renter or a homeowner? On the other end, is it, you know, do I have to prove that I make $45,000 a year? Or, you know, when we're talking about all these different tools and things, or is this just more the diversity of housing, and that would be a different type of, kind of where you have vouchers and you get into those kind of programs that are government-assisted?
They're income-qualified, so you do have to display your income to make sure you're not exceeding those income limits. And I forget the threshold, but you are allowed to move on up and increase your income to a certain point before you have to find another place. But yeah, it is there, the incomes are verified with the applications.
Based on all these different things we would talk about if we were to pursue this?
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Alderman Marx.
David, just to clarify, like, with the density bonus, if, let's say you have a subdivision that has five homes, and they want to build one that is affordable housing, is that then kept track of by the city? Or what happens if someone buys it and upgrades? I mean, you know what I mean, at some point, just, you know, pretty much guts it and brings it up. Is there a way to track that, or how does that happen that it stays affordable housing?
I guess it depends on how it's constructed. So if it's constructed like that in a subdivision, that could very well happen, and it could be taken out of the affordable housing the next time the state comes and does their analysis. But if it's a larger complex where they're receiving tax credits and all that, they have to keep them as affordable units for at least 15 years and most likely 30. So you have some assurance that those units will stay affordable.
And that's kept track of by the association that gives those credits? I understand that.
Right.
But I just wonder how that works, though, when you look at a subdivision, though. I mean, does the city have to track that? Or, I mean, what's to keep them from changing that, you know, three or four years down the line? You know, I mean, someone comes in, wants to tear it down and build a bigger house, do we control that, or how does that work?
We don't. I think that's...
That's kind of where it gets messy.
Yeah. That's where it gets a little bit messy, but I think the more you diversify the housing stock and the more options you have, the more likely you're able to maintain the affordability.
So my question is, I guess to make it easier, there's no way we can put some type of caveat on a title to that piece of property that it has to stay at an affordable housing? I mean, I hate to give away a bonus and then see that, you know, four, five, six years down the line, it's changed.
I mean, that's something I'd have to look into.
Okay. That would be interesting for me. I mean, I think that's one way to keep it as an affordable housing if we're going to go down that road, because I think that's pretty much what St. Charles is doing, and with what limited land we have left, I think we're going to have to kind of look at something like that. Just an idea. Thank you.
Alderman Bruno.
Thank you. I don't think the slides are next to one another, but there's... I don't think the slides are next to one another, but there's the TIF map, and there's the map that showed the affordable, opportunity sites, if you will, for affordable housing. Do you have a sense for how many of those opportunity sites reside in our existing TIF districts?
I don't think it was many. I think it was maybe one. Trying to remember where the other map is, too. Excuse me. Yeah, so maybe a few. Kind of going up the hill there.
Okay. Thanks. That's all I wanted.
I'm sorry, just, could you go back to that? Is any of that property that is highlighted still available? Any of this, is that owned by the city, by any chance?
The piece on Lewis Road over here, backing up to the tracks, that is owned by the city. We've got the Christie Avenue piece is owned by the city. Think that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
There's a piece on East State Street as well that's owned by the city that's being marketed. Couple doors down from the greatest place on earth, Dairy Queen. Yes, Alderman Ruby.
All right. David, the 363 number of affordable units that was referenced in the plan, do you know, have we built any? Have we changed that number? That number's probably grown, not decreased.
Right. It's probably grown, not decreased. The subdivisions that have come through have been much higher-end townhomes or new single-family homes.
Okay.
So that number's probably grown.
Okay. And do we, does Geneva have a housing trust fund, like St. Charles?
We do not. That's something we would need to establish.
Okay. So currently, that's not an option for the developer to pay the fee instead of doing the affordable housing? Okay. And then Geneva, we don't have 10 percent of our housing affordable, and it's probably not obtainable, so we're going for the 15 percent of new housing to, that's our goal, is to get the 15 percent of new building, of new construction affordable?
Right. That's the goal that was established in the Homes Plan.
Okay. So 15 percent, what, in, like, how is that gauged? Like annually, like 15 percent that a builder does in one year in Geneva has to be affordable? Or what's the gauge for that?
I think it would be project by project. So if, I mean, right now, it's a goal, it's a stated goal, but it's not a requirement. So that's where the inclusionary zoning comes in, if you're going to make it a requirement or a payment in lieu of providing it.
Okay.
You could set that threshold at 15 percent. So if they're proposing 100 units, 15 of them should be affordable, and if not, they need to pay for 15 affordable units.
What if, I guess our single-family home's not an option, then? I mean, what if they're just building, like, tiny houses or something like that? What if it's, you know, just one unit? How do you do 15 percent?
Well, we would have to define our threshold.
Okay.
So we can say it starts for projects that are over five units, if we don't want to, you know, get into that requirement for a small infill development of two or three lots.
Okay. So is there any way to encourage just smaller homes, just affordable homes?
I think without impacting the market some way, I, you know, I don't know how to do that.
Okay. Yeah, and then just a comment. It's hard to achieve affordable housing when the proposals that we do see get shut down. So something I'd like to see, hopefully, happen. Just a lot of challenges. Thank you.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just kind of a hypothetical question. So since we're largely built out and there's not a whole lot of development opportunities, we have this idea of this housing trust fund. So the developer can come in and do a pay in lieu of putting in an affordable unit. What happens if we, if everybody comes in, they do that, they pay that fee, and we build up this fund that's supposed to be then used in Geneva for affordable housing, but we really are then built, there's literally nowhere else to go? What do we do with that money? And my, just a second part of the question is, you'd say it was like $34,000, I think, in St. Charles. How is that number determined? Is it the difference between, like, roughly what the developer wants to, like, what the market value is in that area versus what the affordable number is? Or, so those are my two questions.
I know that that number has fluctuated in St. Charles. I think it used to be almost twice that number. It started off much lower, then it was almost $79,000, and then it was cut back. Well, it started off much lower, then it was almost $79,000 and then it was cut back. So I don't know what methodology they use to arrive at the 36,000. But in, in that hypothetical situation, if, if you really don't have the opportunity to build new housing, St. Charles has other programs like down payment assistance for first time home buyers. So you can, you can help improve the affordability of housing in Geneva through those types of programs too.
That's kind of interesting though. So you could then use that trust fund to help get somebody into a, not affordable house, basically, but, but get financial aid to somebody that I needed?
Right, that might need that assistance to qualify for the loan.
Interesting, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else on the dais before I invite our guests in the audience to Alderman McGowan? Excuse me.
Thank you. Hey David, thank you for all this information. First, a quick question on accessory dwelling units. Are they typically, would they be given a unique address? Would it be like, you know, 342 Adams Street, Unit B? Is, how is that typically divided?
We would, we would have to give them another address, yeah.
And have there been any accessory dwelling units added in the city of Geneva in recent years that you are aware of?
I'm aware of one inquiry over the last year or so. I think there's one or two of the senior accessory dwelling units that have been constructed. And then with CTRON Place, there was approval for, I believe it was eight within that development at the owner's option.
Of course, that hasn't even been finalized yet.
Right.
Okay, and then, I was very impressed with the steps that the city of St. Charles is taking to encourage affordable housing. It doesn't seem like the city of Geneva is doing any of those. How can we get to that place? What steps do you, do we need to take to just follow after any of those good examples that the city of St. Charles is, is setting?
Well, I think we need to, to have more discussion on the topic and decide what tools we want, we want to implement. A lot of, a lot of what St. Charles has done is, is simple code amendments to, to the zoning ordinance to provide those incentives to, to require the affordable housing to be provided or, or a payment in lieu of. And then we would need to establish how we would use those funds, how we would collect them and distribute them.
And what is the catalyst for code amendments? Is that something that comes from city staff, the city council? When could that take place?
I would take the direction from the council.
The, the council would basically say that's the direction we want to head in. And then staff would draft up an ordinance for your consideration.
And is that just something that could happen at any meeting under new business?
Well, it would take a consensus of the council. So it can't be just one alderman. It would have to be a majority of the aldermen wants to move in that direction. So ideally, we would have discussions like these. And at the conclusion of one of these discussions, maybe we would ask for recommendations. Do you want to do nothing? Do you want to do this? Do you want to do that?
Because this reminds me of the sidewalk bank that's been mentioned over the years. And of course, that's such a small...
The sidewalk bank was mentioned earlier this year. And at that time, we said the ideal time to talk about that is during strategic planning because this year's budget had already been set.
Right. So as I was saying, this reminds me of discussions we've had regarding the sidewalk bank, but it just seems really vague as far as, I mean, I attended the strategic, strategic planning meeting last year. It doesn't really feel like anything concrete came of that. So my concern is that we'll go through another strategic planning meeting and the same thing will happen. So I, I just need to know how we can come about more concrete actions from these strategic planning meetings. And the meetings are, are great and they're productive, but I don't see any, it's hard for me to see any empirical evidence of some, you know, just concrete actions that the city has taken to fulfill some of those goals. Whether it be pedestrian sidewalk or safety improvements, the sidewalk bank that we've, we've talked about, or affordable housing. So I'm just trying to get, I guess, get the conversations moving in that direction and seeing if...
Again, ultimately though, it takes a consensus of a majority of the council to want to move in that direction. So if we have two aldermen who want to do one thing and two aldermen who want to do another, another thing, that goes nowhere because there's not a consensus. So I think it's building consensus among yourselves as to what your priorities are and what's most important.
Yeah, I, I definitely agree with that. So I think this would be an awesome opportunity now to take what David has presented here and just find out what that consensus is. So I'm not sure of the best way of doing that, but that's what I would, I'd like to find out. And then see what the will of the council is as far as, do we want to, not that we have to follow St. Charles exactly, but kind of follow in their footsteps. I think they're setting a really great example and doing some things. So yeah, I do want to know what the consensus is.
By all means, you can certainly offer a motion to direct staff, if you will, to consider language relative to?
I'd rather not have a motion to vote because you can't actually take...
Oh, excuse me, consensus. Excuse me. We, you can literally raise, we could take a temperature of the committee tonight. If there's a majority of those who are interested in perhaps advising staff to create language that reflects something similar to our friends in St. Charles, that's as easy as that. I think it's important to note, historically speaking, and many of you in the room probably know this, some of the veteran council members do, for years and years and years and years and years, we were all shocked that we were still compliant in the state of Illinois for having enough affordable housing. We thought, wow, that's surprising as heck. St. Charles began their process many, many years ago to, quite frankly, incentivize those who worked for the city to live in the city. They provide down payment assistance, very creative. They of course have more revenue and resources to do so, which, bless their home rule. I believe, and to your point about empirical evidence, I believe that the flip was, the switch was flipped when we saw rezoning behind Lowe's and we saw the rezoning on the old St. Charles mall site. As you and I both have discussed, there's 2,000 apartments being developed in St. Charles. They've got leverage with them. You know, the most recent proposals, we have about 20. So, and I also believe that this council has discussed in the past, the likely opportunity for affordability as defined by the Illinois statute is going to be vertical. So, you know, it's interesting. But with respect to taking the temperature, that's your call. You can certainly ask for that temperature to be taken anytime and that'll be recorded accordingly. We could proceed accordingly.
Okay, so thank you. So when you say take the temperature, it would just be a motion to take a, like a voice vote or?
I'll, I can simply say it for you if you'd like. Is there consensus tonight from this committee to ask Mr. DeGroot and his team to consider language relative to an overlay district to help inspire ADUs and/or affordable housing in general?
Are you just phrasing that question as a hypothetical? Like you're just saying that's a possibility of what?
No, I'm asking right now. And then we can discuss that. Because if everyone says, forget it, Burns, then I think we've got our direction.
I'm not sure. That was kind of detailed, so can you please repeat that?
Pete, roll the tape.
Okay.
Is there consensus this evening from the committee, acting as a special of the committee, we cannot take action because nothing's been posted, that we ask David DeGroot and his team to prepare language for further discussion that identifies overlay districts throughout the city to inspire accessory dwelling units? Number one. Number two, language relative to fee in lieu of, in terms of the affordable housing criteria, and any other language that helps achieve this goal of more affordable housing throughout the community?
Inclusionary housing.
Inclusionary housing orders. There you go. How's that? Is that good?
I would second that.
Now, inclusionary housing ordinance.
Oh, okay, I make a question.
Yeah, that's just the, and we can discuss that now if you like. Alderman Bruno, you had your hand up, then Rodeki Maladra.
My, my only concern there, I, I think, I would say everyone on this council wants to do something. My concern at this point in the conversation, that seems like a really broad thing to throw at staff right now. I don't know if we can home, kind of draw it in a little tighter, like there are some things that this council would like over other things.
Well, there's the inclusionary housing ordinance highlights. I mean, let's face it, folks, we, those of you who have been around a while know full well that one of our first attempts, almost, no, our first attempts deliberately to quote, create more affordable housing was by narrowing lot width and length in some of the developments that are now about 10 years old, 12 years old, 15 years old in Geneva. We did so, we patted ourselves on the back and pounded our chest, then we realized when everyone moved in, they couldn't put decks on because it exceeded the floor area ratio. It was like, whoops. So we rezoned those properties in order for those to put decks and patios, et cetera. And some of you may know the development I'm talking about, but...
So, well, I have, so would, David, my, my concern is, would you like more, would it be beneficial to have a little more guidance than just what we've covered here today?
Maybe a little. But I, I think if there's consensus from the council that we'd like to see something similar to what St. Charles has adopted, and we're, we're happy to work on that and draft it up. We could look into what that appropriate fee might be and talk to St. Charles a little bit more about their experience and why they've kind of gone back and forth in that fee and how they arrived at this number. So, I mean, absolutely, we can, we can take that direction and work with it.
Thank you. Alderman Rodeki, then Maladra, then back to McGowan.
Yeah, well, you know, it's always laudable to take action and we want to take action. I think something of this scope and this nature, we have today. We've started the discussion, there's an awful lot of information. We haven't even seen this presentation before. This is the first whack at it. I, I think, Mike, you're on point. It wouldn't be fair to staff to just say, hey, go back and, you know, draft this up. I, I think it's going to take more policy discussion. It's a big policy, it's a big policy adoption. There are multiple options that we can do for multiple areas. So, you know, I, I think at this point, I mean, this is a lot to digest and an awful lot of information, all the calculations and things. So I, I think it would be premature to, to entertain a motion and a second and try to give direction at this point to staff. But as much as I know, you know, we'd like to take action, I think there's an appropriate way to do that. And I think a little bit more measured response might be more fair to staff, give us a better product and maybe do it a little bit more efficiently. I think it's a, I think it's a really good, another policy discussion or a working session to come up with what options we feel are, are really the most appropriate for us, given, you know, we, we do have a little, to, to say we want to be like St. Charles, we, we don't have what they have in several different things. So trying to model ourselves after them might not be the right thing to do just on a, on a whim today. So I think we need to take a little bit more measured approach at it, so, thank you.
Maladra, Clemens, Kilburg, McGowan.
Yes, so you want to be like St. Charles, your first step is you become home rule. St. Charles is bigger than we are, so they're home rule by population, therefore they have tools that we do not have. We talked a lot tonight about tools to provide incentives and you don't need home rule status to do that. But we didn't talk at all about the tools that you need to make sure that any kind of massed housing, let alone affordable housing, works to the advantage of the community as opposed to the disadvantage of the community. Most of you have heard me rant about this for years, but there are some new people, so...
We can just play the tape at the same time if you want.
Yeah, exactly. It's probably out there. I don't have a lot of experience with affordable housing, but I do have some. Three specific incidents or involvements in particular, none of them good. My experience does not lead me to believe that the problem is the people who live in affordable housing. They're shitheads of every stripe.
Okay, we're going to scratch that for the record.
How do I put, there are good and bad people of every racial age, gender and economic demographic you can think of. The problem that I've encountered is holding property owners and landlords responsible. They need to live up to their responsibility to provide safe, affordable housing. And they don't always do that. And so if you're a community that doesn't have the tools that you need to hold them accountable, you don't just have a tiger by the tail, you have a problem. It's a problem of your own making. So the discussion of affordable housing cannot take place without a discussion of how do we ensure that, that property owners and landlords are held accountable, in my opinion. So if we were to call on a consensus tonight, my consensus, my position would be absolutely not. We're not ready because we don't know how we can manage the situation. St. Charles and Batavia, they can manage it because they are home rule.
Mr. Clemens, Mr. Kilburg? Excuse me, Mr. Clemens?
Thank you, Mer. I agree with Alderman Maladra in terms of the accountability. That's why I was asking about that in your presentation. That is an issue. But I also agree with Alderman Rodeki. This is a huge topic. And, you know, I wouldn't be comfortable just saying yes, let's look at St. Charles as a template and running with it. I don't know enough about what St. Charles does. I would have to go back and look at that. I'd need to talk to you more. I've met with you and we've discussed this and I think it's an important topic and we do need to do something. But the desire just to take action, we can't just rush into it, in my opinion, because it is very important. You know, I, I personally myself, again, I don't understand enough about St. Charles' own situation to just say I want to do what they're doing. I do know they don't have home rule. That is, that is a big, big difference. You know, and I also am thinking to myself that we just approved tonight the strategic plan draft that was, and within that is the idea that we're going to have a task force. We want to hear what our residents, beyond just what SPAC has presented, is what a resident task force has to say about this. So, you know, we wouldn't be taking any of that input into account if we just rushed it tonight. So I think, you know, I would definitely be voting no on, on doing something tonight because there's, there's much more to this discussion. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Alderman Kilburg?
Right. I think as we develop a plan or a strategy to address this area, I think one of the things that we need to look at strategically would be properties that might be available within Geneva that we could identify for repurposing. And I know that there are areas of the community that maybe the, the city needs to get involved and try to identify some of these areas and look to acquire, the city acquiring and then work with the developer to, to potentially repurpose those areas. You know, I, I don't think we've talked about that, but I think that that, that is one of the avenues or venues that we could consider taking and, and again, creating more of a vision for the community and, and trying to, to take some areas that, that are underdeveloped or could be repurposed and, and add to the community. Giving some thought to that, if, if your staff could, could be involved in, in coming to the council with some ideas. And again, maybe, maybe these properties aren't currently being marketed, but the city could approach current property owners and see what those, those values might be or what they might be interested in selling that.
Alderman McGowan.
Thank you. So just a couple other thoughts. Park Place was on my mind, the new kind of luxury development by Wheeler Park. And that would have been a perfect example of a developer who could have been given the option to provide a percentage of affordable housing units, which they did not. Those are all high end, as far as I know. Or they could have declined, including any plans for affordable housing and paid the, paid into an established housing trust fund, which we don't have. So I feel like that was a missed opportunity. And I'd hate for that type of situation to kind of keep, to continue as other newer high end luxury condos are built in the existing spaces or if there are tear downs. The library building next door is something to consider, what's going to go there? Is that an opportunity for some affordable housing or for that developer to refuse? But then let's have a housing trust fund established. That's why I feel like it is important to take some steps sooner rather than later. Okay, also, I would, I don't know if this is the appropriate way of saying it, but I guess I would like to direct staff to pick a date for future policy discussion in the not too distant future so that we can keep building on what we've discussed this evening. And I wouldn't expect city staff to have all of the answers, but maybe this would give them an opportunity, David, you could see if there are any... them an opportunity, David, you could see if there are any updated numbers out there regarding the number of affordable units needed for Geneva to achieve a 10% goal, and also, maybe what would that number be, if you could maybe get some more information? I know you're still waiting for a big housing, a regional housing study to be completed, so that may or may not be possible at this time, but I guess it would be interesting to find out as much as you could. And let us know. Also, I understand that we are different from St. Charles, as I said, I wouldn't expect us to follow St. Charles' plan exactly, but I do think that what they are doing is impressive, and we have to do what kind of works with Geneva. So, we don't have any, there's been some talk about accessory dwelling units, we really don't have any yet, so that's something that we could really push for and encourage and build in incentives, and find out very clearly what are all the tools for people who would like to add an accessory dwelling unit. Same goes for repurposing existing properties, Alderman Kilburg, I think that's an excellent example of how we could bring in some more affordable housing, and also affordable single-family homes, so we don't, this doesn't have to mean a huge, massive rental property. So the argument, Alderman Maladra, that you brought up of fear of the unknown, which I personally feel is discriminatory against low-income individuals who need affordable housing, I don't really feel like that has to be a big factor in the discussion for Geneva. So, I'm happy that we're having this discussion. If any of you are on, for example, the Geneva, What's Happening in Geneva Facebook page, which I read from time to time, there's almost always someone looking for an affordable place to rent, and it's usually a young person, I can kind of tell just from their profile picture, it's a young adult, maybe they have young children, but it is a real problem, and it's, there's definitely proof of it out there, that people wish to live in Geneva, there are also seniors who would like to have an affordable place here. Tara, you mentioned a family with a child who's going to become an adult, who they wish to keep close by, so, with a developmental disability, so many, many reasons why we should continue to move, do something, I just wish we could do something kind of concrete, so. With that being said, is there a way to set a date for the next policy discussion regarding affordable housing?
There certainly is. We traditionally look for either fifth Monday and/or any day of the week that satisfies everyone. Of course, one month from today, we have our strategic planning workshop, which I suspect, based on the strategic plan itself, knowing that affordable housing is in that plan, that's probably the closest date, but beyond that, again, I defer to the committee with respect to availability. We had discussed either fifth Mondays or Wednesday evenings, which are usually blank nights in terms of city meetings, so...
And I think there's a couple various policy discussions that need to be had, that we've talked about, that what I would like to do on that November date is set those dates then, so we can prioritize which discussions the council wants to have and when they want to have them, and we can set out a plan, rather than just throwing out a date now, not knowing workloads, not knowing what research needs to be done, and that kind of thing.
And may I ask, Stephanie, so as far as timing, David, why did you choose, why was this night chosen for you to give this presentation, as far as the strategic plan coming up?
This night was chosen primarily because the plan's coming up.
And was there any other...
So we thought this would be informational, leading to a perhaps fuller discussion on November the 2nd, yeah, because we know that it's on top of mind of a lot of people.
Yeah, and there's a lot of information, so I understand, okay, thank you.
Rodecky, then Maladra.
I guess for...
Berger, excuse me.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll reclaim my time, Jim, sure, but, just joking, I understand the frustration on this, because we all in our hearts want to make Geneva a more inclusive, diverse, affordable place, but I guess I want to also point out that city staff does what's directed by this council, and this council that's sitting here today is not the same council that was here two years ago, or four years ago, or eight years ago. If we show the political will to get behind some of these measures, then we will move forward, but it's not a lack of information or education by our city staff, it's been a lack of political will, probably by this council, and I don't blame them, because this is a tough issue for me. I want affordable housing, but I know if I go forward with some of these tools, I also have to say in my heart that I'm okay with it being across the street from me, I'm okay with it being next door to me, because that's what I'm saying to residents in Geneva, this, you don't have anything to fear, your property values won't go down, it won't, we'll make sure that the landlords keep it nice, that it's an asset to your community, and that's, it's tough, I mean, it's different, we're talking about something different, you know, when CTRON Place got approved, I talked to someone who's going to live across the street from it, and I said, gosh, my only issue with that, I just wish those were more affordable, I just wish they could be $300,000 units instead of $600,000 units, and the person living across the street said, why? I love them, you know, I mean, he's living in a $300,000 house, that's gonna, the value's gonna go up, because there's going to be $600,000 houses across the street, so this is a big issue, like, I'm so glad, I think this was a really good presentation, I'm definitely going to share it with the people who follow our Facebook pages, and I'll have more questions, it's definitely something I want to sleep on and talk to people, I want to get more feedback from the community, I'm hoping some of the people here tonight are actually waiting patiently to talk, but certainly good discussion, and I'm glad that everybody's interested in it, but there's a reason, obviously St. Charles has some things going good, but one of my questions for David was, are there other towns that struggle just like Geneva to meet that threshold, and I'm sure they're, we're not alone in this, in this challenge.
Yeah, there's, I have an entire list that received notification that they were non-exempt local communities at the same time we did, I can share that with the council, along with some of the other materials I'll pass on either tomorrow or Wednesday.
Mr. Rodecky? Yep?
I'm sure glad you went before I did, because you teed up what my comment was, I think Alderman Clemens hit right on it, you know, our strategic plan calls for the input from our citizens with us, you know, we brag about our plan and how inclusive it is and how we bring everybody into it, I think any timeline that we establish for this, and it's not to put this off, but it should have a logical flow to stay with what we want to do strategically, and I think we should get more input. We should hear from, you know, more sources about, you know, what's the best way to do this. I don't know that that should be made in a vacuum in this council, we value that plan, we use it as a template for a lot of decisions, a lot of the discussion that we have, so I think we should respect that too, and be sure that we keep that in mind as we set a timeline with this. And it doesn't mean that we can't have discussions concurrently, and it doesn't mean that we have to wait until there's some forum with a thousand citizens and that, but I think that has to be respected, and I think sooner than later, as Alderman McGowan said. Thank you.
Alderman Maladra?
Just to clarify, if I said anything that paints me as a discriminatory person, I'll say it again, perhaps in better language, there are good people and bad people of every demographic you can think of. My desire is to find a solution that works for Geneva, as you said, Tara, we want to do the right thing. I believe that that right thing is finding a way to diversify our housing base without opening ourselves up to problems that I'm not making up, problems that affected me and my family three times, problems that affected the city of Batavia before they were able to enact their safe housing ordinance, so they're not just made-up issues, they're actual factual issues. So I apologize if I said anything that painted me as a bigot or a discriminatory individual, but basically, I believe that we have to do this in a deliberate, smart, careful way, looking not just at how we attract the positives, but how we control the proliferation of possible negatives.
Anyone else in the day who has not yet spoken? Anyone from the audience wishing to comment or ask a question regarding what just happened here tonight?
Well, you know I was going to do this.
Mr. Miles?
I'll be quick, you know, we have Chuck Miles, I'm here just as a resident and an individual who's been involved in this topic for a while, partially because of my work with Association for Individual Development, trying to find affordable housing for people with developmental disabilities and mental health. What I would do, I was involved in the Homes for Changing Regions study, which was adopted by the city council, might have been different people, but by this city's council, in 2013, 2014. Nothing that David has shown you tonight is any different than what was done in 2013, 2014. There was a committee put together by Mayor Burns to go work with the people to do a Homes for Affordable Changing Regions study, and we did that. We spent about six to nine months, I think, a lot of time and effort to do that. I would also advise you, so before we have the next planning session on this, advise those of you that haven't looked at that in detail, go back and look, because it lays out, one of the first things is to change the zoning ordinances to make this workable. Nothing has happened, okay? When we were doing the Homes for Changing Regions, everybody was worried about Marquette Apartments, even though we didn't have the name. We're a city that can't even approve non-affordable housing. That's troubling to me as a resident of Geneva. Okay, the other thing I would urge you to do, if you think you're not getting enough community feedback, go look at the consultant's report from SPAC. They interviewed business leaders, all of those business leaders came back and said, we need affordable housing for the people that work for us. Look at, Dave had the presentation sheet that showed who falls into that affordable housing, and I would urge you to forget about the affordable housing metric. Think about this differently, think about this either as housing that's affordable for the people that live in your town, or housing that's attainable, and with the, my wife will kill me when I get home, and so will Mr. Grosso and Kevin Gannon, but I had a number from Dave, for a one-bedroom apartment in Geneva was $1,200. Thirty percent of your income means you need to make $4,000 a month, $48,000 a year. Beginning teacher in Geneva makes about $41,000. They have to be a teacher in Geneva for seven years before they can have a one-bedroom apartment in this town. Now, I don't want to hear all the other stories, but I think it's kind of a neat idea that my teachers live in Geneva. My wife's a teacher, a lot of our friends are teachers, they live in Geneva, they love Geneva, and that's important to this community. So we need to think about this as workforce housing. I worry about my boys when they come back from college, they'll have a good job, but I'd like them to live in Geneva, too. So think about all that stuff, and the other thing I'd encourage you to do is to think about ways to make this work, rather than all the reasons it will not. Other places have done this. Several of you have been to a affordable housing complex that was worked on with AID. Everybody in the city council got voted off for voting for it. You know what they're doing now, three years, four years later? They're building senior affordable housing down the street. It's one of the greatest places they have in South Elgin. Whatever you think about affordable housing from the past is no longer true. There are great developers doing this that are accountable, and some of you have met them and worked with them, and they're willing to work with Geneva, but we have to show that we're willing to accept, we have to have the political will to accept any kind of affordable housing in this town. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Welcome, sir. Thank you.
I'm Jeffrey Wosse, I live over on Dow Avenue. I would really like to thank Councilperson McGowan for your comments about moving forward, and I would second everything that was previously said. I think it's important to remember, as you were told tonight, that you're not operating in a vacuum, you're defined as a non-exempt community. That's a statutory federal classification, which can have real consequences for the community legally. In the previous presidential administration, HUD came very close to imposing rules which would have resulted in the federal government being able to come in and imposing a plan on non-exempt communities. I would encourage you to, as a non-exempt community, set goals, objectives, timelines, to reach a goal of exempt status, so that you don't have a situation imposed on you from the outside, which I think in a different administration could happen to the community. You need zoning ordinances, you need goals and objectives, you need timelines, and as a citizen who wants to give you some feedback, it looks like you're talking it to death.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Good evening.
Hi, Samantha Molesky, I live at 1740 Pheasant Run. I have a couple questions and comments, I was just wanting some clarification of how exactly the plan works and what it does. So, I read the statute, it says 10%, it doesn't have any real teeth to it, nothing happens, but you do have to have a plan to get to 10%. So what happens when there isn't enough land to get to that? I haven't, maybe I missed it, but I haven't heard that talked about, I'd like to know the answer to that. I was nervous about the idea brought up by Mr. Kilburg of the city getting involved in possibly purchasing land, getting in the business of buying land for developers to move forward with some of these projects. It almost seems like you'd have to hire a whole additional staff just to manage something like that, it sounds like, I don't know enough about it, it sounds like it could be expensive using taxpayer dollars, I'd like to know more about that, how that would work. Some of the land on that map as possibly being able to be used for affordable housing borders my neighborhood, so I appreciate the comments that have been made about gaining, receiving public input, about how this process would work and possible ordinances you guys would develop. I would appreciate you guys being open to citizens and their comments. And just to kind of counter what some other people have said, I, and my husband and I, couldn't afford to live in Geneva, and once we could, we moved here, and I'm okay with that. I'm okay that we couldn't afford to live here, and then we could and we moved here, you know, I don't think there's necessarily, I like the idea of there being affordable housing and inclusive, so people with all backgrounds can afford to be in a certain area, but it seems like you're dealing with a very specific supply and demand issue, and so I know many people here have said, this is a complex issue, and I just, I'm wondering how all this is going to work. I like the idea of it, how it gets implemented, I don't see how that could happen with the land that's available, and I'm also kind of torn because, you know, you, like I said, we were in a position when we could afford to live here, then we moved here, so, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening.
My name's Emily Erickson, I also live here in Geneva. I just wanted to, again, thank the couple of Aldermen that really pointed out you need to talk to the residents, because I think if more residents were kind of aware that this discussion was going on, there would be a lot more people here voicing their concerns, so instead of just maybe looking at a study by a third party, walk around your wards, talk to your residents, see what their opinions are, because I only moved here two years ago, and I had the choice, I looked at Geneva, St. Charles, and Batavia, and I chose Geneva because it was landlocked, my realtor at the time kind of told me it's basically at capacity, they talked about St. Charles and how it's, you know, wants to almost double, or whatever the numbers was, it doesn't matter, but I chose Geneva because of that. I chose it because of the low density. I don't want to discuss affordable versus not affordable, but to me, affordable usually, in our situation in Geneva, equates to high density, and that is what I personally don't like. I like my neighborhood, my bigger lot, I don't want any available land around it to just be built up just to get as many units as possible, because then I think that kind of goes against what made Geneva so special, what keeps it this desirable place for people to visit, the quaintness, the history of it, the trees, things like that, that once you start packing in people just to have people and reach numbers, you start losing what made Geneva special to begin with. So... So, obviously, these discussions are important and they need to go forward, but let's make sure that the community is a little bit more involved and, and you reach out to your neighborhoods and you really tell them, "Let me break it down for you." I don't know whether you flyer your own neighborhood, hold little, little, um, neighborhood meetings to talk about this, because I don't think most people even know this is going on clearly by the number of people that are here. So, that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman, of course, Alderman McGowan.
Thank you.
Mr. Clements?
Yes, an interesting point was raised. David, I'm wondering if that's something else that you and your staff could put together, I mean, take all the time you need, but maybe put together a hypothetical plan based on the amount of open land that Geneva currently has. What would it look like for us to attain the 10% goal? Where would those units of affordable housing be kind of scattered throughout the city? And maybe that's something that you've already done?
Some of that information is already within the Homes for Changing Region Plan, showing our capacity for growth, um, under the existing zoning that we have. Don't quote me on the number, but I think it was, it was in the ballpark of like 800 new units under the existing zoning, and that was back in 2014, and we've probably added closer to 200 since then. So, you know, to, um, to the point made earlier, you know, if we don't have enough land to reach that number, what do we do? And I think, um, we, we run with the goal that we have, is that with new development, we're trying to achieve a portion of that as affordable housing, not necessarily trying to meet that 10% threshold.
Okay, that sounds great. Um, so we're, we would easily be able to meet the 10% goal, if, based on the amount of open land we have now. It's not like we would be struggling to find places throughout the city.
No, I-
Unless I'm misunderstanding.
Uh, under the current zoning, without rezoning properties and-
Oh, yeah.
Doing planned unit developments, I don't think we would be able to get there.
But hypothetically, if we did, um, approve rezoning, then we would. Is that what you were saying?
Right, it would require some change from the council. We have industrial properties that are shown on that map, um, that weren't factored into that 800-unit figure, so if those were rezoned, um, right, you could increase the, the potential.
And we were speaking earlier this evening about the land east along Fabian, the former King County Sheriff's Office, it is City of Geneva proper, is that also identified as an area?
That one is not, because at the time of the plan, it was, it was part of, um, the Sutter Hill, Hill Master Plan.
But is that something that has, is being talked about as a future site for housing?
It, it's not at this point, no.
And why is that?
Uh, for a number of reasons. It was never considered to be a site for housing, whether it be affordable or otherwise, primarily because there has been a drive and a push to bring that land back to the tax rolls that helps generate revenue, respectfully, not that which costs communities' money. So, um, that's the chief reason why.
Okay. Also, another comment I had here, David, can you please refresh your memories? How long has the strategic plan for Geneva, or the downtown station area master plan, if I'm saying that correctly, how long has it called for increased density, housing density in our city? Can you, can you give us the year going back?
Well, I mean, the downtown master plan was adopted in 2012, um, and then it was amended in 2013. The strategic plan before this new one was adopted in '07, I believe? And then-
'07, and then redone again in 20-
Updated annually, right?
Well, but we did another wholesale overview of it in 2014, I think, I'd have to look it up.
So, for both of those plans, going back to either the year 2007 or 2012, someone looking to move to Geneva could ask their realtor for that plan, or do their homework and kinda see, "This is the plan for this city," and then make their decision about moving to Geneva accordingly. Is that a fair statement?
It's, it's fair, I mean, I-
So this isn't something new? It's, it's something that has been around for quite some time?
I, I think, um, for myself as an urban planner, and for folks like us that deal with this on a regular basis, that's a fair statement, but I think most people probably don't reference comprehensive plans in their communities, um, when purchasing a home.
Yeah, I know when I was-
Unless there's a vacant lot across the street or something.
I know when, back when my husband and I were purchasing our first home, and it was here in Geneva, I got books from the library, and it was like Home Buying 101 and other, other books, and, and they did identify a lot of those things, so it was, it was interesting. So I think it's just more as a buyer, what you're kinda tuned into, but I just wanted to, to have it on record, like, we have had these plans for higher density, calls for higher density, and probably, not just in Geneva, but from my conversations with you in almost all areas-
Right. It's a regional trend, yeah.
So, okay, thank you so much.
Yes. Ms. Molesky, is that correct?
No, Erickson.
Shucks. Erickson. Way to go.
Question first, comment, I clearly missed the Home Buying 101 for Dummies, but, um, I would like to say, or ask a question as far as, there's been all these units put in place for St. Charles, you know, however percent in that many units, is there like a radius that goes outside of Geneva that, you know, you can say that if a person wants to work in Geneva, St. Charles is just across the street? If there's all those opportunities for affordable housing there, how does that factor into our numbers, or Batavia, or people, you know, within a radius? What qualifies something to be a worker's within a certain distance to be-
It's, it's within the community itself.
Okay.
It would be akin to, um, our swim team swimming at the Norris Center saying, "Hey, it's our pool, too." Uh, it's not.
Okay.
So, for those who reside in St. Charles and work in Geneva, St. Charles gets the quote, "credit" for it.
Okay.
Uh, and keep in mind that St. Charles is not building per se affordable housing lock, stock, and barrel, they're accepting the fee in lieu of-
Okay.
And they're developing that trust.
But with all those apartments that were going in, there wasn't a percentage?
There's 608 apartments scheduled for the, the old St. Charles Mall.
Okay.
Um, if any of you remember the Orange Julius, it was quite popular there, and 200-plus behind the Lowes, and another 200-plus ahead of the old Charleston Mall. It's my understanding that the first two have no affordable housing component.
Okay. Okay.
It's my understanding of that.
Okay.
David, am I incorrect?
That's my understanding, too. I believe the one had maybe 60 units.
And, uh, Ms. Erickson, that question was actually asked regarding another development that was close to us, just south, that if in fact a development is built that achieves a certain affordable number, can Geneva receive credit for that? Uh, the short answer was no. Cannot. It has to be within the corporate limits of the City of Geneva. So, 'cause I think a logical question is, what about Mill Creek? Or, and of course, that's not the corporate limits of Geneva, therefore, we don't receive the, the credit, if you will. So, anyone else? Mr. Clements?
Yes, thank you. Just quickly, just a couple of things to comment on from some things that multiple of you said. Um, I, I actually went to one of the SPAC forums, I think it was the second one they had here in City Hall. I wasn't on the council yet, so, you know, I was contributing at that, and I was interested to see what came out of it, and it definitely was important. Chuck is absolutely right, and if you do reference the, the report from the consultants, you'll see it in there. With that said, after becoming an alderman and now I'm talking to people, when I go to events, outings, when I'm picking up my kids at school, any of these things, I, I ask people, um, questions, and I like to get a beat on what's going on, and it's not clear-cut. Um, I, I, I do favor moving forward with something here, but it is important to really get more input. SPAC itself and those forums, I don't feel accurately represent everything that the entire community feels. Um, I think it's a sample, it's a small sample, but I feel that the reason that SPAC said, um, and maybe Stephanie, Ben, or Chuck, you can, uh, speak on this, uh, said that we should have a task force, is because now, we think this is important. Now we need to reach out and we need to get more input from a bigger, broader group of, of the residents, um, and I do think we, we, I think that's important, because this is a big issue. And I, I, this gentleman here said, "You gotta do more and talk," I agree. I mean, at some point we do have to, this cannot just go on indefinitely forever like this. Um, so, there's, there's a lot of good and right things being said here, but I do think that the community input is, is important, even if it means we end up pissing a lot of people off. We need to get it. Uh, I like, I think it was Mrs. Erickson, um, you know, you're, you're saying we, we need to talk to more people, we'd have more people here tonight if they knew this was actually going on, I think you're probably right. Um, I don't know when we can get this task force going or how that would work, I'd like to be a part of it. If we can't get it done fast, I mean, I'm happy in my ward to talk to my neighbors, I'm happy to have a meeting on this and have people come in and talk to me, talk about these tools, what do you like, what do you not like, and why, and come back to one of our bigger policy decisions. Um, but I'm happy to do that and meet with the neighbors in my, in my ward, and you're happy, you're welcome to come, too, I don't know which ward you're in, um, but, you know, I'm happy to do that in Ward Two. I, you know, um, that's all I have to say on that. I'll put something out, um, I don't have too many followers on Facebook, but I'll put something on there and try to find another way to actually reach a large number of people. Um, thank you.
Alderman Kilburg?
Uh, I, this is the beginning of a process here, and, uh, its time has come, probably, but the thing is, there's very few things that fly under the radar here in Geneva without, uh, citizen input. I think if you were here through the, uh, historic preservation discussion-
[laughing]
-over three nights, or if you were here, uh, when we discussed, uh, development on Western Avenue over about three nights, and this room was filled, uh, our, our community is very attentive, and, uh, at the right time, uh, I'm sure this council will hear how our community feels about our ideas and the plan that might be coming forward. So, uh, give it time, it's a process and it will play out, and, uh, the community will certainly have an opportunity to provide all the input that they want, because we've been here to hear it.
Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. So, one idea, we do have the surplus, the budget surplus, and I don't know how much it would take, cost for an independent organization to, to do a survey, like a mailer, for example, and putting together something, so it's coming from more of an unbiased source? So, is that something that-
So, so I think we're, we're talking about a bunch of different things that are within the strategic plan, and if we can, if we can wait one month, we can sort some of this out, because there's talk about doing a community survey that would, would address a lot of different issues, not just this issue. There's talk about a diversity task force, there's talk about updating the Homes for Changing Region Plan, there's talk about updating zoning, but until as a body, we prioritize what of those things that we can reasonably achieve within the next year, I think we just continue to spin, spin our wheels and continue to talk. So I think there's a lot of great ideas that are floating around, but I think we need to capture those and kind of funnel our energies, and so that, that would be my recommendation. I know, it's not what you like to hear, but I truly believe that that's the best mechanism to get this conversation kind of on a path to figure out where we're going.
Absolutely. I just thought I'd throw it out here, now, since we are talking about it, and there is a lot of overlap with the discussion we'll be having at the strategic planning meeting in the next month. Um, may I ask, David, are you aware of other local towns or towns municipalities in the area that have put forth a resident survey to kind of gauge the interest level of their residents?
On affordable housing, I'm not, I'm not aware of that kind of outreach being done.
Do you feel like that would be a useful, and I don't know, I'm not the expert, do you feel that that would be a useful endeavor?
I mean, I think, I think through the planning projects we have, or planning processes we have, we've, we've kind of done that and it's fed into the strategic plan.
True. And I guess the same thing would be, like, you could spend all the money upfront to send out a survey, and you still have no guarantee of how many people would actually complete it and mail it back, and based on the number of people who even vote, or you come to our meetings, it probably wouldn't be a very high number, then you wouldn't really know the exact-
Yeah, and I mean, with, with planning processes, you may get a small sample, but those are those that are engaged, and we've done that through downtown master plan, strategic plan, right.
Okay, so it would sort of be redundant, like, what you're thinking of. Right. Thank you.
Anyone from the audience wishes to add a comment or ask a question? It gives me no great pleasure to announce at the request of Alderman McGowan that according to the notes I've taken, and if someone wants to correct me, please do, there does not appear to be consensus that we direct staff with respect to developing language on an inclusionary housing ordinance at this time.
[inaudible]
A show of hands would be a vote, and we should not do that since it's not officially on the agenda. If I am incorrect, I open the floor to anyone who wishes to correct me. Based on comments made, I have, um, eight aldermen who are, quote, "Wanting to learn more and invite greater input prior to setting a policy discussion."
I would add my name to that if you haven't already, I'll, I'd be willing to wait.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Anything else on, uh, what were we talking about again? Anyone else on this topic? Anyone on any topic? Motion to adjourn is in order? Alderman Marks makes the motion, Alderman Clements makes the second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen.